The Columbus City Council meeting. The date is November 24, 2025, and the time is 6:02. And the second item on the agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance. Everybody will stand.
A pledge to allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, the third item on the agenda is the adoption of the agenda.
This is Scott. I move to adopt the November 24, 2025 city council agenda.
Rob, I'll second.
We got a motion on the floor. It's been seconded. Any other discussion? Having none, we'll go for a vote. Jenny?
Jenny, aye.
Aye. Rob, aye.
And Ron, aye. Item B goes -- is unanimous. We'll go on to item number C. Presentations and items for council action. First thing on the agenda is public forum.
Sorry, Mr. Mayor. Item B, the consent agenda. Do you want to do that one?
Oh, that's -- gee, I thought that's what we were talking about. Thank you, Scott.
No problem.
That's why I got you on my right side.
Well, Jack was yelling at me, so I'm just relaying the message to you.
Anybody want to approve this consent agenda?
This is Scott. I'll move to approve the consent agenda for the November 24, 2025 city council meeting.
It's Rob, second.
We got a motion on the floor. It's been seconded. Any discussion? Jenny, anything?
No.
Nobody else? We'll go on to a vote. Jenny?
Jenny, aye.
Rob, aye.
And Ron, aye. We'll go down to item C now, the presentation and items for council's action. First one is public forum, number one. Is there anybody out there that would like to get up and make a statement to the council? Hearing none in the audience. Anybody online? Nobody online. We'll close that and go on to item number two. City council vacancy interviews and appointments.
Councilmember Janet Haglen submitted her letter of resignation from the Columbus City Council on October 16, 2025. The council accepted Mrs. Haglen's resignation and declared a vacancy for her seat on October 22, 2025. The council may appoint any individual who is eligible for election to the office. To be eligible, a person must be a U.S. citizen, a resident of the city, and at least 21 years old. As Minnesota law, it's silent on the appointment process. The city council may decide how it will determine the procedure for the appointments. At the November 12, 2025 city council meeting, council approved the process used for the previous council vacancy appointment. That procedure was to accept letters of intent from city commission, committee, board, and authority members as candidates for the position. Council set the date for the submission of the letter intent for Wednesday, November 19, 2025. Letters of intent were received from Karen Fleming, a member of the EDA, and Kim Snell, a member of the planning commission. Both candidates have been invited and are here for interviews tonight. Staff request that council interview the candidates that have applied for the vacant city seat, and upon conclusion of the interviews, council may entertain motions for an appointment position or other actions as council may see fit. Megan?
Absolutely. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Megan Rogers, the attorney. Just wanted to confirm for this board that the attorney general has opined that this is a determination that you have to make. And as the city manager outlined, you know, there is not a formal process for doing so. So our recommendation from the city attorney's office is that you conduct these interviews, that you have an opportunity to discuss as a council the interviews that you have just completed, and then you follow the motions practice that the city manager has outlined, the city administrator has outlined, I should say. So to make a motion to appoint one of the candidates based upon the conversation that you have this evening and your review of their records.
Thank you, Megan.
Mr. Mayor, do you want to do this alphabetically, or what order do you want to receive the candidates in?
I think we said alphabetically.
Okay.
And just so that everybody understands, there'll be four, five questions written, stated by the council, and we're going to take one of the candidates alphabetically to out of the room so the other one can answer the questions, then the other one can come back in.
Jim, could you go with Snell?
Absolutely.
We'll come get you when Ms. Fleming's interview's over. Karen, could you step to the table and the microphone?
Karen doesn't have to say her full name and address, does she? She's on the EDA?
Nope.
I think we know who she is and where she lives, so.
Okay. If I can just find my questions here. So, good evening. Karen?
Yes, sir.
You've got, you had a list of these questions ahead of time, all right. So the first one is candidate's reasons for serving as a city council member.
I have a written statement I'd like to read, if that's okay with my answer. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, city council members, city staff and residents. I said, "My journey with the city council started years ago when I lived here as a young child. My parents and grandparents lived here, too. I moved back to Columbus five years ago. For me, it started three years ago when I was asked to serve on the EDA and was told it was a two-year term. I agreed because I thought I could add value. A year into my term, I was asked to co-chair our city's fall fest. It had been a few years since the city had a fall fest because of COVID. I had never put on a city event before but agreed to the challenge. It was my suggestion for sponsorship for the businesses to offset the city for its expense. Fall Fest was an immense success, and it became bigger and better since that time. I was proud and happy for the residents to have that event that they could attend with their families. When my two-year term was up, then they asked me to serve again, which was now a six-year term, which was a long time. But that was a conversation for another day. I accepted the six-year term. When the city's council seat became available, again, I felt I could add value. I liked learning about our community on a local level. Even though I had many years working with federal and state government, I enjoyed learning about government at a local level. My experience in business runs 43 years. I have worked with the public my whole career. My current position at Blaze Credit Union is MVP of special services. Blaze has donated my consulting skills to assist in a new credit union in a lower-income area in Minneapolis that needed financial services. I am proud to say that that credit union was chartered this year, and it was the first new credit union in Minnesota in 50 years. I am proud of that accomplishment. Prior to that, I was CEO for two credit unions. I worked 18 years at Channel 5. I also served on our state trade association for credit unions in Minnesota for 15 years and two years as a chair. I was honored to receive that appointment because I was a small credit union and I was elected by CEOs from across the state. Was I the smartest person serving on the board? Not a chance. They saw my commitment, leadership skills, and my ability to listen and be fair. When I became chair, COVID hit, and everyone was so scared. For the public, I was access to financial services and their money, and for financials, it was staffing issues because people did not want to come to work. I can tell you, working at Channel 5, there was no excuses not to come to work. Blizzards, the pandemic, the news is always on the TV. I went to work every day during COVID. Regarding my skills as a CEO, I did budgeting, federal and state taxes, working with businesses and vendors, negotiated contracts, IT, payroll, and worked with the board of directors. I have also collaborated with our elected officials on a federal and state level. For the last 20 years, I've been out to Washington, D.C., yearly, with the exception of COVID, working with our senators on federal consumer issues and on our state capital and state issues. As a resident, I'd like to acknowledge Jack, our city administrator, who does an excellent job running our city offices, our mayor, and our current city council members who have stepped up to serve our community. In closing, I'd like to share a piece of advice that I've learned in business in my 43 years. I would not concentrate too much on the past. The past is a good history lesson, but the vision for the future is what we make our city, is how we make our city great. Thank you.
Thank you.
And I promise my next answers will be quick.
Jenny, we kind of made a determination here that you'd read the next question. Do you have the questions?
Oh, yes. So, question number two. Karen, what is the candidate's commitment to the position and acknowledgement of time required to fulfill the duties of a city council member? Are you available to attend all regular and special city council meetings, committee assignments, and community events?
Yes.
That was quick.
Yep.
Scott, question three?
Yeah, thanks for coming in and taking an interest in this, Karen. It's very much appreciated. Third question is, what is your vision for the city of Columbus?
I would like to see the city of Columbus maybe have a restaurant someday. I think it would be nice to have families be able to eat locally in our city. As far as for the children of the city of Columbus, I'd like to see a hockey rink and a skating rink in our city park. I said, "I've got some thoughts as far as how we could pay for that every year," so that's down the road. And I want to make sure that we keep our taxes low for the residents.
Rob?
Thanks for being here, Karen.
Thank you.
What do you think are the top three challenges that are currently facing the city of Columbus?
Well, I know City Hall needs to either be repaired or rebuilt. I think the staff should have a nice place to work so the roof isn't raining in on them, so I know that's a big concern. I know we need a water tower, so I know that's coming. And I would say just keeping our taxes low for the residents.
Thank you. And the fourth question, Karen. Do you have plans to serve on the city council beyond the term of this appointment?
I have no idea. I guess this next year will prove, you know, what that might look like. I can tell you, if I do plan on running, I think the safety of the city of Columbus will be my top priority. I think that's an important issue for our city.
Okay. Anybody else have any other questions from the council? Bob?
Yeah, I just had written one up here. So how do you feel your career and her past careers, experiences in life could benefit the city of Columbus? I know you touched on it briefly with your opening statement, which I do appreciate, but things you've done in your career that would translate to this position?
Well, I think my budgeting skills and dealing with the public for 43 years would be a nice asset to the city of Columbus. You know, like I said, I have a huge background in, you know, all sorts of things as far as business goes, IT and working with businesses and vendors and negotiating contracts and all those things, so, yeah.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome.
That's all I got, Mayor.
Is that all? Well, thank you, Karen.
You're welcome.
We do appreciate you making the application and --
Appreciate the consideration.
It's a tough day for us.
Yep.
Thank you. Good evening, Kim.
Hi.
Thank you for applying, and thank you for coming in. And we're going to start off with the questions, and I'll be the first one to start. And it's, first one, as you already know, if you have questions, is candidate's reasons for serving as a city council member.
Okay. I was raised by my grandparents, and from the time I was 12 and had my first job, for every hour I worked, I had to volunteer an hour. And as you know by my application, you know, I've passed president, I've worked on Habitat for Humanity, RSVP. I was on the Governor's Task Force for Missing and Abused Children, and it was started by Governor Purpich, and worked with law enforcement rewriting all the legislation. And we went and interviewed pedophiles, and it was interesting. And the pedophile said, "There's no cure. Medication, castration, don't work. Keep them incarcerated."
Thank you. Just their last sentence on there was something. We'll go on to Janet. Will you read the next question?
Yep, hi, Kim. Talking about commitment to the position and acknowledging the time required to fulfill the duties of this council seat, are you available to attend all regular and special city council meetings, committee assignments, and community events, as we know that time does end up being a huge part of this position?
Yes, I'm retired, and I have the time to do it. I'm currently on zoning and planning, and I've been attending city council meetings for myself to get a background and knowledge of how you go from zoning and planning to things becoming passed by the city council. And I look forward to volunteering.
Thank you very much, and thank you for being here.
Thank you.
Scott?
Yep. Again, Kim, thanks for coming in and volunteering to do this. Very much appreciated. Third question is, what is your vision for the city of Columbus?
Well, I think the city is growing, and I think it's an exciting time for us. And I want to be a part of helping form and get out there in the public and solicit business, businesses and working with them, whether it's commercial or residential, being able to help and assist in any way I can. And I think my experience as a business owner and as a volunteer, I think I would be a good liaison between the potential businesses or new residents and city council and zoning and planning.
All right. And again, thank you for being here. What do you think are the top three challenges currently facing our city?
Well, I think the problems with the city is right from, I think we're growing at a good rate, and I think the problem is going to be finding businesses that can fit into what we have. And what the model is that the city council decides that we need to bring in revenue, we need to bring in housing and the needs for it, we need to try to keep as much as possible for people who do live here to be able to shop and go to restaurants and see a movie or, and Running Aces is a nice place to start, but we have to have other things to bring people in.
Thank you.
One more question here on the sheet. Do you have plans to serve on the city council beyond the terms of this appointment?
If the residents want me, yes.
Then I want to ask that same one again. How do you feel current or past careers, experience in your day-to-day could benefit the city of Columbus? Past experiences?
Okay. I was on the Governor's Task Force for Missing and Abused Children. I was on the Board for Habitat for Humanity. I owned a business, my first business. I bought a resort in, just out of Squaw Lake, Minnesota, and had a bar, restaurant, campground, cabins. It was year-round, and I used to teach fishing, wild rice harvesting, making boughs, actually contracted through McMinn's to do their bough cutting and have everything run out through my business. And also, I had a 160-acre tree farm where I grew hybrids, bush, and pople trees through a company called Forging, and they grew full-length in 10 years, and they were able to be harvested rather than 20 to 30 years. And after that, I was, when I was on the Governor's Task Force, I just needed to try something different, you know? It was a little depressing, and I needed, so I sold my house and basically went to Duluth, and I bought the rights to 38 acres in the middle of the LTV mine site. And I had lease rentals for 66,000 acres to have access to stone. And within the first week of buying my business, I was contracted through the Army Corps of Engineers to do the safe harbor stone in Port Wing, Wisconsin, as well as the one in Twin Ports.
Great, thank you.
Two harbors.
Thank you.
And so I think, you know, the diversity in this with us wanting to have restaurants and bars and the ability to, you know, have more housing here and looking for development options, I'd also like to work with other agencies within the county and the state as far as regulations and, you know, be active within the legislature and different items.
Fantastic.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Well, thank you very much, Kim. We'll get Karen out here, and I guess we're going to have a discussion.
That's correct, Mayor. So you've heard from two exceptional candidates, and it's a wonderful benefit to the city that you have the opportunity to have people who are willing to serve in this capacity. So that is a wonderful benefit. But now it's time for a conversation about selection of a person to sit in the seat next to you.
You want me back?
Well, I suppose. Thank you, Kim. We're waiting for Karen to come in. I'd just like to tell Karen and Kim, we really appreciate you, your public service work that you're doing right now and the predicament you put us in, because you're both very qualified, and this is a real tough decision for all of us up here. And I have talked to Jack about once flipping coins and doing everything underneath the sun, that we can avoid this, but tonight's the night. So we're going to open it up for a discussion right now, and I'll start off the discussion. I think we have two great candidates here, and it's going to be very difficult for us to go on, but I think there's two different characters here, too. Both of them are volunteers, one more in a business and one more in social, community type of areas. So I, it's, they look different, but they're the same. They're volunteers, and I think that it's great that we have them, and it's going to be a tough decision between us four, but we can't put it off till next week or whatever, even though I'd like to, but we're going to try and settle this tonight. So anybody have any other discussion here? Jenny? Anything to say, or?
No, I mean, so this is Jenny. Obviously, you both have, you know, spectacular resumes. You know, I appreciate Karen for all of the skill set that you bring on the financial side. I think that that's a huge benefit. You know, and Kim, attending a lot of our city council meetings, I think you have the, you know, a lot of knowledge coming into the council. I think both of you are more than qualified, so, you know, ultimately, it's, I would approve both of you, frankly, because I, you know, it's a tough choice either way.
Thank you, Jenny. Scott, you have anything?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, I think following along the lines of council member Latin, this can be very hard because we're, it's a tough decision, and we don't want to disappoint somebody who is so active in our community already and already volunteering. Both of them are already volunteering on committees, so, and doing an excellent job. So that's the hardest part, I think, is knowing that we're going to have to disappoint somebody, and we're not an enviable position to be in for us, but that's why we're here.
All right. Bob, you have anything?
Yeah, no, thank you both, both of you for being here. Both got great things that would fit into this, like Ron had said, two different kind of viewpoints that you come from, community service, business-oriented. So, yeah, it's a tough decision. I've worked, I've worked with Karen, I've briefly worked with Kim on the planning commission. But, yeah, I wish it was such a thing. I asked Ron before the meeting, is this something we gotta, can we do these interviews and chew on it for a week or two? But to find out, we've got to get this thing done tonight, and I'm stuck between two great candidates, and, yeah.
Yeah. And for me, Mr. Mayor, if I may, I think really the only thing distinguishing the candidates is, you know, I have to go back to the letters of interest that were sent in, and I'm looking at Kim's. Both have a lot of collaborative efforts on here, but I'm looking at Kim's working with other government agencies as really the only difference I see between the two candidates. I mean, there's, you know, working with the Army Corps of Engineers, working with the city of Duluth, the Department of Natural Resources, city council. In 2023, Kim put her name in for being appointed to Duluth City Council when that city council position came open, because that city council member was elected mayor. So she, you know, did that back in 2023. But you can't take away all of Karen's work, you know, in the private sector as well. It's equally as compelling. So that's really the only difference I see in the two candidates.
Well, I did bring that up once to our legal team here about putting this thing off. I don't know if we're going to have it just hard or down the end of the road. I mean, are we going to have the same problems we have tonight?
I think that you will continue to be faced by an excellent choice, right? And that is what's difficult. There are, both candidates have submitted complete applications, they are qualified for the positions, they come from different backgrounds, but I don't, I do not know that your decision will be substantially different. If you wish to wait until the December meeting to make a decision, that is something that you could choose to do.
Any opinions on that?
Yeah, this is Scott. I do. So first of all, I don't know that it's fair to Kim and Karen to push us off till to December. And that, it's okay by me, you know, to wait till December, but I don't know that that's fair to the candidates. We're getting paid to make the hard decision here, so to, so.
You have the same opinion there, Jenny? I see you shaking.
No, this is Jenny. I agree. I think whether we're tonight or in two weeks, either way, it's going to be a very difficult choice. If we have to decide, you could take a few factors in. I look at, you know, length of time. I mean, that could be one factor that we consider, things like that. But again, they come from very different backgrounds, so ultimately, you know, I think one of the things, I think we all agree that we're very thankful that we have both of them submitting applications, and we, you know, it's unfortunately a very hard choice. I just really hope that in the event one isn't chosen, that it's not a personal choice and that they continue to serve, because our city really does appreciate most of them for what they do.
That's a good point you make. It's, it's hard, and we hope they understand how difficult this is. Well, somebody want to make a motion? On somebody? See, this is, this is what I thought was going to happen.
Mr. Rob, I'll make a motion, if it could be recognized, Mayor.
Yes.
I think the motion will go something like this. I would like to see Karen Fleming as the candidate for the vacancy position that currently was previous held by Janet Haglen. Deep roots, grew up in Columbus as a child, right? Had a grandpa here, has been here, and chose to come back to possibly retire here. Nothing against the other candidate, both great people, just doing work with Karen. Just doing work with Karen, um, for several years now as I've been on council. I think that, uh, she'd be a good fit for the position.
All right. Do we have a second?
This is Jenny. I would second either candidate, so I, I do second this, but I would second either choice, unfortunately. Fortunately and unfortunately.
So we have a motion on the floor. It's been seconded and it's a little hesitation in the seconded, but, but we have it. Any other discussion on this?
No?
No other? Well, so we'll go to a vote then. Jenny?
Jenny, aye.
So Scott, I'd like to just qualify my vote. I hope that Kim, if you're truly interested in being a city council member, which I hope you are, I think you would be an excellent asset sitting up here and I hope you would choose to run for that position at the next election. So, um, please consider that. Scott, aye.
Rob, aye.
So I have to vote, right?
You do.
I ditto what, uh, Scott said, that, uh, I, uh, I really, uh, it's a tough decision for all of us and, and I guess we gotta move on, so. Well, that's, that's you, Kim. You're very good hearted, you know, and that's what we need and, uh.
And you got a year, six months before the next campaign starts, so.
So I have.
We'll see you then.
I have to vote, then, Mayor. I'll say nay. For you, Kim. All right. So thank you both. Uh, it, it's a public service and it's a lot of work and I hope you understand that. It's 60 minutes, about 60 meetings maybe for the next year. So welcome aboard, Karen, and thank you, Kim. Thank you both for putting in.
Thank you, thank you, Kim, very much. We hope to work with you in the future.
We'll go on to item number that passes. Item number three, um, certification of delinquent utility bills, 9143 Lake Drive Northeast.
City staff is requesting the assessment of unpaid water and sewer charges to the county auditor for 9143 Lake Drive Northeast, Columbus, Minnesota. Property identification number 243222220018. The past due amount for this count is $2,098.87. The property owner has been sent 18 billing notice and reminders and the last payment on the account was October 5th, 2022. The property owner was notified by certified mail on September 18th, 2025, that the city was preparing to certify the charges to the property taxes and they were entitled to request a hearing before city council if they wished to dispute this action. The property owner did not respond to city staff regarding the notification. Staff requests approval of resolution 25 dash 20, the assessment of unpaid water and sewer charges to the county auditor for 9143 Lake Drive Northeast, Columbus, Minnesota. Property identification number 243222220018 in the amount of $2,098.87 for payment on pay 26 taxes.
Well, this is kind of black and white, so. I make a motion, aye, Ron Hanegraff moved, uh, approve resolution 25 dash 20, the assessment of unpaid water and sewer charges in the amount of $2,098.87 for the payment on pay 2026 taxes to the county auditor for 19143 Lake Drive Northeast, Columbus, Minnesota, 55025, pin number 24 dash 32 dash 22 dash 22 dash 0018. Is there a second?
Rob, I'll second that.
We have a motion on the floor. It's been seconded. Is there any other discussion? Comment?
Question on this one. Uh, was this same property previously delinquent in the past?
Yes.
I feel like this is a trend for this property.
I was told this is the third time that they have been charged for assessment of taxes.
Okay. Thank you.
Is that it? No other discussion? We'll take a vote. Jenny?
Jenny, aye.
Scott, aye. Rob, aye.
And Ron, aye. The motion passes. We'll go on to item number four, the IT service contract award.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm going to give you, uh, an abridged version of what's in your packet, since there's a lot of technical information in there. Uh, the city's current IT service contract with Paragon IT expired on June 30th, 2025 and the city has been granted or was granted an ID, the extension to allow staff time to evaluate a long-term service option. Staff conducted a comprehensive review of the city's needs, including meetings with multiple consultants and assessed supporting models, cybersecurity capability, systems monitoring and future infrastructure planning. A formal RFP was issued in September and two proposals were received by the deadline. Metro Sales Incorporated and Computer Integration Technologies. A third provider expressed interest but did not submit a proposal in time. Uh, the Metro Sales proposal includes 24/7 365 help desk support, proactive security monitoring, Microsoft 360 administration, backup management, vendor coordination and long-term IT planning purported by both technical align, a technical alignment manager and a business alignment manager. Metro Sales submitted two pricing options, either for supporting 24 or 15 endpoints. The higher endpoint count reflects, uh, staff usage of both desktop and laptop mirrored workstation. Uh, and that's, uh, micro, um, Metro Sales confirmed duplicate endpoints could be eliminated by transitioning staff to laptop-only setups with docking stations. This would allow the city to utilize a lower cost option with docking hardware costing under $300 a unit and already, and are already funded within the budget. Metro Sales did not provide a telephone integration quote, but they, um, reported that such services are not required because the city maintains an independent phone provider at this point. The proposal by CIT included 24/7 support, uh, SOC monitoring and a network administration. However, many optional and recommended cybersecurity features were presented without defined pricing, creating uncertainty for long-term cost projections. CIT additionally proposed migrating the city's telephone system to a Ring Central voice-over IP service, which the city does not require. Uh, the city received further inform, uh, another information from Metro INET, a public consortium offering IT services up to multiple municipalities. While Metro INET provides stable long-term service structures, its onboarding requirements and equipment timelines differ specifically from these private providers provided. Following review of all the submittals, uh, it is recommended that the city award the Managed IT Services Agreement to Metro Sales Incorporated, uh, due to their comprehensiveness, lower long-term cost potential and the ability to reduce endpoint counts, which improve system, uh, efficiency. If there are any specific questions on either of the proposals, I'd be happy to take a look at those and answer those for council. Otherwise, the recommendation would be to go with Metro Sales, who already services our copier printer.
I started reading this stuff and I know nothing about computers, so I was lost after the first paragraph, so I hope you understand what they're talking about.
I was just trying to get through the proposals. Is how many pages? Yeah, that's a lot. I'm, I'm there with you. I'm not as computer literate as the younger generation, so.
Yeah, well, I'm not far.
How about you, Jenny? Are you a computer?
Yeah, this is Jenny. I have a few questions. Um, so in terms of neighboring cities, Jack, Aaron, can you give us any information about what neighboring cities use? Do, I mean, are these the two? Obviously, these are the two companies that, you know, we solicited bids from, um, but are, you know, do we know what some of the neighbor? I tried to research and look it up, but obviously there isn't much information out there for what they're using.
Yeah, I think it's, I think there's a variety of services available. Um, I know, for instance, the city of Cambridge utilizes someone out of White Bear. Um, we reached out to White Bear, offered them an opportunity and they declined to pick up another client. Um, other cities that, um, for instance, the city of East Bethel works with, uh, Metro INET, which was that third one I discussed, but they are a consortium. Uh, their board is made up of representatives from all the cities that are members and the board has the right to approve or deny those coming on board. Um, and they also require specific hardware and software that the city would have to transition to, uh, which makes their, uh, response to IT needs more efficient. So they're not servicing different hardware that's in each different municipality. They, their technician can respond, know what to, to the, the repair, or if you will, uh, for the piece of, um, equipment that they know as opposed to these other, um, private providers that are willing to, uh, take on our equipment, uh, and then work with us with the long-term plan to come up with equipment if we need that in the future. Um, I don't know what other, I think, uh, the city of Wyoming may use Metro INET as well. Um, in terms of other cities, I guess we didn't do any solicitation, but in the, um, proposals, there are listed other cities that use these private providers.
Well, and I know Metro Sales has a pretty, in talking to some different people, has a good reputation in the private sector as well. Um, so, I mean, obviously that being your recommendation seemed like a comfortable answer for what that was. Um, in terms of the docking stations, I know that the docking stations have a, a slight cost to them, but are you all comfortable and within the city and talking to the staff, comfortable with moving to these docking stations? Is there any, any difficulty that you see for any of the staff in, in doing that that we would need to review? The higher option versus that lower option?
Well, the, the higher option, uh, I guess would, if we would just remove the, um, the tower, if you will, uh, then the laptop plugs into the desktop. You maintain the monitors that are on your workstation, so, um, there's not a whole lot of difference, uh, and I think we can work those through. I think most of the mirrored laptops and desktops are the directors, uh, and so that, that limits the number of them that have to be transitioned. Um, the other option on this is, and I know council, uh, prior to my arrival had requested laptops. Each one of those would be an additional user on that endpoint number, um, should we deploy them? So that's a consideration too in the long run. Uh, that's why they gave us the high end of 24, uh, and the low end of 15, if we can reduce the number of users down to, uh, the minimum number.
One, one thing about other sources or other users, Metro INET probably does about close to 40% of municipalities in the metro area, they have around 40 members. Uh, however, as Aaron said, their onboarding requirements are much different than others. We've had to purchase some of their equipment, plus they couldn't take us on, even if they approved us until probably August or September of 2026, and they were also the most expensive too. So, and again, what you said about Metro, Metro Sales has a good reputation. We interviewed all Metro Sales and CTI personally, found them to be the most impressive in our personal interviews with them.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Well, this is Scott. As I'm looking at MSI and I'm looking at option one compared to option two, if we go from 24 end users or endpoints down to 15, option one is at 45,000. Option two going down to 15 is 36,000, a difference of $8,500. But then we have the $300 for 15 docking stations. That's only $4,500. So you got a 44,000 some dollar savings by going with option two and, and doing that.
And those docking stations are a one-time purchase, so then next year we wouldn't have that equipment cost of the $8,500 or whatever you, you cited for those docking stations, so.
And then the end, the endpoints, that 15, is that including city council laptops? Or would that, those five laptops be addition? Additional? So we'd be right back up to 20?
Uh, when we're talking endpoints, there's also some generalized email accounts that are out there that are shared, that they think that we can cut back. Um, you know, we have a city offices account. We have a, uh, one for employment. We have another email for, uh, public communications. So if they can cut those down, we can try to, we can hopefully get to 15, including the.
So an endpoint is an email address, not a user?
User. So if that email is assigned to a user, which is a separate user, uh, for instance, we had a public communications employee that worked here. I'm still monitoring that email address and that's still an active, uh, user point because it's got an email address attached to that user. So they can come in and we'll work with them on, on onboarding to start reducing those, um, duplicated, uh, email addresses and user points that are out there.
So then is it correct to assume then, Aaron, that because we have city email as city council members, we are included in that 15?
You would be, yeah.
So we don't have to worry about an increased endpoint with city council?
Yeah, and, and this is, this was high end and low end. I assume when they come in to start doing onboarding, we're going to find some happy medium number that, once we get to it, that will be what's projected. And I know that, um, both of these numbers work within the existing budget that we have set aside for IT services, so, um.
Yeah.
We're not overspending what we've budgeted already if there's 20.
So we're not gonna.
17 or.
Yeah, we're not going to creep back up to 24.
That, that would be, my goal would be to not have 24. I think the, the accounts that I manage, we can reduce to one account and I think I manage four. So that, that takes some right off the top.
Careful what you ask for. Okay, thanks.
So, real quick, what's the story on our laptops? They're just kind of sitting idle till they're, I mean, we've gotten them, what, two years ago?
No, we got them last January. We're in the process now of getting them returned to us from our previous IT consultant. Uh, we met with him two weeks ago and he's going to have those back to us, hopefully within the next 30 days. Then those will be set up for your accounts and you'll have access to them.
We can turn on our iPads then?
Yes.
Okay. Any other questions?
Nope.
Hearing done, I'll make a motion, aye, Ron Hanegraff moved to approve the award of the contract agreement with Metro Sales MSI for managed IT services over the city of Columbus and authorize staff to execute the service agreement.
Mr. Jenny, I second.
You have a motion on the floor? It's been seconded. Any other discussion?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I just have a question. So in this motion, are we going to include which option? Option one or option two in the motion?
Uh, probably should.
I suppose we should.
Well, I, what I would recommend would be to include a dollar amount not to exceed. That way, if we determine that we can only get to 20, then, then we're not stuck at 36,000.
All right, so we'd say 36,000 plus 4,500 for the, uh, $300 for the docking stations. Would that be reasonable?
Or can we just say not to exceed the budget?
Uh, I, I would put the top figure in there. We get everybody in here, then we'll come back and give you the presentation then to approve that dollar figure.
Okay. Not to exceed the 50,000? Wasn't it 50,000?
We have $50,000 budgeted for 2026. We want to not exceed that high-end cost that they gave us, which would be $5,000 less. I would think that we would request that we approve.
So you'd be option one?
And then we'll work it out back to get it as low as we can.
Okay. So I have to add that to the motion? Not to exceed option number two or one?
Option one.
Add it to the motion then, uh, not to exceed. Item number one.
Did you get a second on that? If not, I'll second this.
This is Jenny, I second. Yep.
Okay. All right. No, no other discussion? Having done Jenny, you want to take a, start to vote?
Yes, Jenny, aye.
Aye. Rob, aye.
And Ron, aye. The motion passes. The motion passes. We'll go on to item number 44 again. Now this is number five. Ordinance Amendment 25 dash zero six to Chapter 7A, Section 310 of the City Code.
Staff is proposing amendment to Chapter 7A, Section 310 of the City Code, clarifying standardized when as-built surveys required for the issuance of a certificate of occupancy. Under the current language, as-built surveys are required only at the discretion of the building official or zoning administrator. This has led to inconsistency between projects, uncertainty for contractors, and frequent internal debate regarding when an as-built should be required. The proposed ordinance amendment establishes clear predictable standards by requiring as-built surveys for all new commercial construction and for all new residential construction on lots less than five acres in size. The ordinance also preserves staff's discretion, allowing the city engineer, building official, or zoning administrator to require an as-built survey for other projects when necessary to verify compliance with buildable area, driveway, and minimum construction elevation requirements. In addition to standardizing survey requirements, the ordinance reaffirms that no building or premises may be occupied until a certificate of occupancy has been issued and compliance with all acceptable building, zoning, and construction requirements have been verified. These updates are intended to provide consistency and room transparency for all applicants and contractors and support enforcement of the City Code. The city council requested to hold a public hearing regarding the ordinance. Staff recommends conducting the public hearing to receive comment on Ordinance Amendment 25 national six, and to close the hearing, consider approval of the amendment. If we could open a public hearing, make comments, and then we can have discussion of the matter for approval.
Anybody have any questions on this?
No questions.
Jenny, I?
No.
I can make the motion.
Okay.
You have to open the hearing.
Need a public hearing.
No longer here.
Mr. Mayor, you got to make a call for a public hearing.
Oh, I got to make it?
Yeah.
Motion? I, Ron Hanagraf, move to approve conducting a public hearing.
Nope. Okay.
Good, continue.
Yeah.
Where was it now? I, Ron Hanagraf, move to approve conducting a public hearing to receive comment on Ordinance Amendment 25 dash zero six, and at the close of the hearing, consider approval of the amendment. There a second? Does there have to be a second?
Let's have a second to, a motion to, to open the public hearing.
Seconded.
Okay, Rob, seconded.
Right.
We got a motion on the floor, been seconded. Any other discussion, comments, hearing none? We'll take a vote. Jenny?
Jenny, I.
I.
Rob, I.
Ron, I. The motion passes. We'll go on to the next item on the agenda.
We've opened a public hearing now, we need to request comment from the audience or anybody in the public.
We're opening a public hearing.
Yes.
All right, so we're going to open a public hearing to the public. Is there anybody in the public that would like to get up and make a comment about this motion or the amendment adjustment? We have two people in the audience that's shaking their heads. No? Anybody online? Ain't nobody on, no, online? Nobody responding? We're going to close the public hearing, and now we're going to open up for discussion. Any discussion? Hearing none? I make a mo, now I got to make the same motion? All right.
A substantive motion, Mr. Mayor, absolutely.
I, Ron Hanagraf, move to approve conducting a public hearing to receive commi, oh no, we already did that one, yeah.
Make a motion to consider approval of the attached amendment.
All right, I, I make a motion to make approval of the Ordinance Amendment 25 dash oh six, amendment to 7A, wasn't it?
Rob, second.
All right, we have a motion on the floor, it's been seconded. Any other comments or questions? Hearing none, we'll take a vote again. Jenny?
Jenny, I.
I.
Rob, I.
Ron, I. We'll go on to something easier here.
Just, for the record, it wasn't right in here, so.
All right, we'll go on to a letter of support Otter Lake Road Extension Project.
The city of Lino Lakes is currently completing final design plans for the Otter Lake Road Extension Project. Construction is proposed for spring of 2026. This project will extend the roadway from Main Street, County Road 14, to its intersection with 24th Avenue, just north of Heritage Parkway and Hugo. Lino Lakes is currently seeking funding for the projects through the local road improvement program and is requesting an updated letter of support from the city of Columbus to include their application. This improvement will be part of the initial access that will directly serve the Minnesota Technology Corridor and eventually connect with Line Street at the southern corporate limits of the city of Columbus. This portion of the project will be entirely funded by the city of Lino Lakes. City of Columbus approved a prior letter of support for this project in 2023, and a map outlining the project area and the scope of improvement is exhibited as attachment three in your report. Staff is requesting approval of the letter of support for the Otter Lake Road Extension Project, and incidentally, we will be contacting Lino Lakes for a like letter of support for our Hornsby Street project.
You answered my question.
I see that was done by Elizabeth Beck in 2023. Any comments, questions on it? Verifications?
I would, I would say that it benefits our city, right? Any, any roadways that lead to our city that are good roadways.
And, well. And they're talking, remember, was it Alex or somebody came in and started talking about standing?
Yeah. Yep, yep. I think it was when we were kind of talking about what was going on with 23 and.
And, and eventually this will be a road that would hopefully be constructed from County Road 14 all the way up to Lake Drive, or at least a portion of Hornsby Street South. And this will also be a topic, I believe, of a subject on our work meeting on December the 2nd, as to proposal or doing some consulting services to start figuring out some of the costs of some of these projects, some of the funding sources to have these roads fully extended and utility services provided to serve those developable areas within this corridor. This is also a project that was supported by D and is a statewide initiative to make this a tech corridor parallel to Interstate 35.
Well, this is a deal where Lino Lakes has got to go to the state to get money, right?
Correct.
And we're right behind them saying, yeah, we support the idea.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Any other questions, comments? I, Ron Hanagraf, move to approve a letter of support for the Otter Lake Road Extension Project.
Rob, I'll second.
You have a motion on the floor, it's been seconded. Any other discussion? Comments, hearing none? We'll take a vote. Jenny?
Jenny, I.
I.
Rob, I.
Ron, I. The motion passes. We'll go on to item, this is number six here. Minnesota Association of Small Cities, MSAOC proposal.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You all have heard about the Minnesota Association of Small Cities back in October, when Cap O'Rourke, the executive director, was here and made a presentation at a council workshop and outlined the benefits of their membership. You heard on October 22nd, staff recommendation to join the Minnesota Association of Small Cities. At that time, the council tabled the item to provide time to contact existing member We bring it back to you again tonight to recommend that the city join the Minnesota Association of Small Cities and evaluate their contribution to the outcome of the progress in resolving the unique fiscal disparities issue of the city of Columbus and the approval of Hornsby Street project in the 2026 bonding bill to determine if there is future value in remaining in a membership after 2026.
Is the deal where we pay 50 cents for every?
Yeah, the cost of membership for the city of Columbus would be a $200 annual base fee and a charge of 50 cents per capita per year. Estimated cost for 2026 would be about $2,400.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, this is Scott. I did reach out to several cities on their, their list, some of them smaller than us, some of them equal in size. Largely inconclusive what I got back, almost all of them said they don't deal directly with CAP, even though they are members. However, Hinkley did respond that they didn't have CAP do any lobbying directly for them, but other member cities did have them doing lobby in for them, which directly affected their community, and they thought it was well worth being part of the membership because of the lobbying done for neighboring cities that affected, affected them. So, got positive feedback on that for minimal cost. I think it's something to explore for at least one year and evaluate how it went, how it goes.
And if we can do this too, that'll enable us to double down on our efforts by using our services with Larkin and Hoffman, in addition to whatever the small cities program can provide us in our efforts to get the bonding bill approved for Hornsby Street and/or to make some initial progress in our dealings with our fiscal disparities issue.
Yeah, and I should state that those efforts were reported by Hinkley as being successful too, so.
This, Jenny. Scott, thank you for doing research on that because I've weavered back and forth on this just because fiscal disparities is, is challenging in general for us as a city because the counties don't seem to want to, you know, really make any adjustments on what that looks like. So thank you for reaching out to those other cities to give good feedback.
Yeah, and, and I think it's important to, to remember here, it's not just fiscal disparities that some of these cities were benefiting from. There were other projects like Hornsby that they benefited from.
I think some of the other benefits too are access to other informational resources and access to notifications of updates on grant programs that are available to us.
And I should say, I talked to Jack Briffield about this, and he promised me he was going to keep track of how much money we spend on this versus how much we're saving, so.
Well, thank you again, Scott, for checking that out, but I, I, you know, we're not the only lonely city sitting at 40,4,000 people under that 5,000 mark. The more, might as well get in with them because they're fighting for the same thing we're all fighting for, so.
Same here, a question if I could. So this is a yearly subscription thing? This is something we'll have to approve to continue in years following so we can kind of track. It might take a couple of years to find out if this is working or maybe even a few, but just wanted to make sure it wasn't something we're locked in for five years like a building inspector or something.
My assumption is we'll get an annual invoice, and we can choose whether to pay it or not. It's a membership.
Like a membership fee.
Yeah.
Thank you, and Scott, thanks for your looking into it.
Okay, well, with that, I can, Scott, move to approve the city joins M.A.O.S.C. for a one-year term and evaluate, evaluate their contribution in moving forward toward a resolution of the city of Columbus fiscal disparities issues. And in the approval of the Hornsby Street project in the 2026 bonding bill has prerequisite to an extension of membership for 2027.
This, Jenny, I second.
Okay, Jenny, seconded. We got a motion on the floor, it's been seconded. Any other comments, questions? Hearing none, we'll take a vote. Jenny?
Jenny, I.
Scott, I.
Rob, I.
And Ron, I. The motion passes. We'll go on to item number seven, set agenda for December 2nd, 2025 city council workshop meeting.
Thank you, Ron. Our council workshop meeting is scheduled Tuesday, December 2nd, 2025, 5:30 PM. The following items are recommended for discussion. And this brings up again this Minnesota Tech Corridor Discussion, the Minnesota Technology Corridor Cooperative Agreement, which is spearheaded by Anoka County. There are actually six partners in this, city of Columbus, city of Forest Lake, city of Hugo, city of Lino Lakes, Washington County, and Anoka County. So they're going to get us a presentation together, and they, we will present what their requests are for trying to hire consultants, see what our next steps are and how to get this kicked off on corridor development and what cost estimates are, what grants we can apply for, and how this can be funded.
Some additional information, Jack, is Greg from Gillis, the economic development director for Anoka County, will be here to make that presentation on December 2nd. I confirmed him today.
Okay.
And the other thing too, we've been approached by American Tower again. They want us to give them a right of first refusal on a tower lease purchase in the event that somebody else wants to buy that tower. We get requests all the time from groups who say, we'll give you $300,000 to buy your lease for the tower out there. When you run the numbers, you find out that that's not really a good deal, but they want to add that to their existing lease. I want to have our attorneys look at it first, but I want to have some discussion on that so we can give them direction if we do sign the lease. There's a $5,000 payment they will make to us for that lease agreement extension. So that's all I have, but there may be a couple of other things that come up in, in the interim, but those are the two major items I would propose for discussion.
Okay.
If anybody has anything else, let me know, and we can add them.
Any other comments? Anybody got anything? Okay, I'll make a motion. I, Ron, move to approve the December 2nd, 2025 city council workshop agenda.
Scott, I'll second.
Scott, I seconded. Any other questions, comments? Not hearing none? We'll take a vote. Jenny?
Jenny, I.
I.
Rob, I.
Ron, I. The motion passes. We'll go down to item D, city engineers' report. Brian?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Brian Bachmeyer, consulting city engineer. The administrator just asked that I give you an update on Forest Lake. They did award the contract for Eureka to Forest Lake Contracting. It's our understanding they're anxious to get started. They were going to install pre-warning road closure signs north of 97 on Hornsby. It's road closed to through traffic from 7 to 4:30 every day and then open in the evening. So they're going to have those signs out there, and that work, they're starting their first phase is to preload. They're going to surcharge along the west shoulder of Eureka, and so there's going to be a lot of fresh hauling material in there, and so that's the reason for the road closure. But it will say road closed to through traffic, will be open to the coffee shop to the north, and then again, open every evening. I just wanted to give you that update if you had any questions regarding, regarding that. I know the city, they did apply for a right-of-way permit through the city, and the city did grant the right-of-way permit. So there is coordination between the two communities on that project.
So that surge, you call it surcharging? And that's where they dump a lot of dirt or sand?
There's going to be a mound along there to put some additional weight on, to try to get compression of the subgrade below, the softer soils to compress them, and then that material will be removed when they start construction of the road. They use that material for subgrade correction on the eastern portion of the road, so.
What will they do with that fish trap that's there? They just, how do they get by that?
Fish trap? Are you familiar with that, Jim?
I think they're going to do some sort of fishing way there. And I'm not, I'm not sure what all of the plan is, but I know that they have some ideas with their $4.5 million that they got.
Because I gather they're going to surcharge that all the way up to our property.
And, and actually, we'll actually go a little bit into the Columbus side of it, a couple hundred feet with the spoil piles for the surcharging.
Nice. So looking at the plan, that's on the west side of Eureka. So in reality, they're going to move Eureka over to the west?
I think there's going to be some widening. They're going to have shoulders, and then the trail will be along the west side. So it's a combination of roadway improvements and the trail improvements.
Anybody else have any questions?
That was going to be my question. There is a trail, and that'll link up right to ours.
Yes.
Yeah, that's.
One way to finish our. Sure. Yeah, we're going to have that missing gap there, quarter mile.
Twelve hundred, yeah.
That's, I like it because now you'll be able to come up over that bridge, and you can ride right up to the bike trail with what they're putting in along 97, so. with what they're—they're putting in along 97, so.
It is—it's unique the way they did it on 97. That's a wide bike trail they got. You see that little spot they put in there on the north end of 97 for anybody who wants to hunt deer or something? That little cut off there?
Yeah.
Even have an opening in the fence where they— DNR must allow that, so. Whatever. Anything else, Brian?
Nothing, Your Honor.
Nothing on Notre Dame yet?
They did get the boardings done last week. I have not heard the results yet, so they indicated it would take them three weeks after the fieldwork was done to issue the report. So, we should see something, I would say, right before Christmas, I would expect.
I ask one question. What do they fill in those holes after they pour them out?
They probably used sand and gravel, and then there— there was a little bituminous patch that they put on top.
Somebody had asked me that. I didn't know if they threw cement or what down at all. And how deep did they go, four feet?
Minimum four feet, yeah.
Okay, well, thank you very much, Brian. Go to city attorney's report. Megan?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I don't have anything truly substantive. We've been working with staff on some minor ordinance revisions along with planning staff and city staff, but other than that, stand ready to answer any questions that you might have.
I had a few before the meeting started. Anybody have any questions? Well, thank you very much, Megan. We'll go on to the city council report. Jenny, you have anything?
Yep, this is Jenny. I don't have anything to report today. The only thing I did want to note was a special thank you to Susan because I believe this was her first packet that she worked on, and she did a great job. So, I wanted to just send a note to her thanking her for her hard work on this, but I don't have anything to report in terms of committees because I think we'll talk about the EDA in just a minute.
Thank you. Scott?
No report.
Rob?
Thank you, Mayor. It was more just a concern that spun out of Jenny's report. So, when we get emails now from Susan, the end line says Susan, but it says it's coming from Laurie still? Is that just an IT issue? We're going to have to wait until we switch over to MSI? Correct. Okay, yeah, I was totally thrown. I'm like, wait, Laurie's still here? What's going on?
We have a—we have a laundry list of needs, and that will be one once that get addressed to me.
Okay, okay. It was it. All that I had was more of a curiosity thing that spun out of Jenny, so thank you.
Okay, as far as my report, the only thing I can say, we didn't have it down here, but we did— me and Jack met with the park board on the 18th last week, and we can say that the dugouts are still online. They thought they would start this fall. We had to—we hoped they could get the cement for the dugouts in the park, but they plan to do it in the spring of the year. And they're looking at maybe—for cost-wise, to save money to do all three fields, to lay the cement because they say when you get the people out there and you get one truck to dump, you're not bringing that truck back and forth and back and forth. So, we had some good ideas, and it looks like we're—we're moving on that one. Other than that, I can't remember anything else. Can you, Jack of the park board? Oh, wait. Brad and Bob Bodine, Brad Norling, they're, as we've seen in the consent agenda, they signed up for another— how many? Three more years. So, they're—they were supposed to be on the board. They expired on December 31st. So, that's great, Louis. And that's about all I have, unless you remember something, Jack?
No, we kind of discussed a little bit about the budget and a few other things, but you covered the main item.
Okay. And that's all I have. We'll go on to item number four, the EDA. Me and Jenny were there, and— do you want to talk about it, Jenny, or?
Yeah, I sure can. So, this is Jenny. The EDA met in a special meeting last week, Thursday, at 9:00 a.m., and basically, we— one of our main focuses was to discuss— we had an interview process and then a subsequent re-advertising of the open seat because two of the applicants had potential perceived conflicts of interest, both because of their business ties and/or fundraising that they do for our city. Both are well-respected within our community, and so really, the focus was talking about that re-advertising as well as a potential subcommittee within the EDA that these two people could potentially serve on to still basically keep their involvement and excitement that they do have and want to be involved while removing any potential conflicts of interest. So, we discussed that as well as just some of the future of the EDA, and then obviously, now with Karen changing and moving on to the council, we will potentially now have two open EDA seats, and so we'll have to discuss that as well.
And let me just bring up one thing. Until we get some of these appointments filled, we may want to look into the possibility of appointing the liaison member to each of these committees, commissions, boards, or authorities as having voting power while we still actively look to have these replacements filled, just so we make sure we have a quorum in a meeting.
Well, we would have three.
We would, but if one of them's absent, then we have two. So, that's why I'm saying this is a temporary thing, and it only—they only have that power until the appointments are made to fill those vacant seats.
Good move.
Mayor, if I could, is there any— Megan, is there anything against Karen finishing that until we get the replacement as a—as a council person? Plus, because previously, we're all council people on it before, plus additional. Is there anything against her finishing it out until somebody can take that? Or is there anything about her continuing to keep that duty as a council member?
Well, so she was appointed as a member of the EDA, and she—and I'm just trying to think of recent examples. We've had a number of council members—who served on planning commissions and then needed to serve and be seated as city council members. So, certainly, that is something that would be possible. There's no prohibition in terms of her serving in both seats in both capacities. I think the—the sort of best practice, though, is, you know, again, maybe something that the council wants to consider, having a—a larger number of members of the city council serving on the EDA. That's a very consistent practice,